I wanna say good. Good evening and welcome to our school board forum. Uh, it's been hosted by Delaware PTA. My name is Kelly Coffey. I'm actually the president of Delaware PTA. First State Action Fund, NAACP Central Branch, League of Women's Voters, 100 Black Mothers in Power, the ACLU, Network Delaware, and Coalition for a Safer Delaware. And we want to thank all of our partners um for hosting this event. Tonight's forum is for Colonial School District. Um, and I wanted to share some housekeeping rules first. All attendees except for the candidates will be muted. The chat is for questions only. Questions will be asked to each candidate, but if an attendee wants to ask a question and the topic has not been addressed, we'll get to those after our already planned questions. We're streaming this on Facebook Live on First State Educates page. And comments on the Facebook page will be turned off. This is a forum, not a debate. The forum is being moderated by myself, Kelly Coffey from Delaware PTA. And here are the rules and guidelines. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves. We'll use a timer. Um, and you'll see it, uh, Tanya, up at the corner of the screen.
Okay.
Once the timer is done, I'll say thank you for your comments. All questions will be asked by the moderator, myself, and you'll have two minutes to respond. There will not be any rebuttals. It's important for you to understand, this is an opportunity for you to act, talk about your platform and why you are running. Authentically, you will respond to the questions in your own words. There will be questions from the audience, but these will be in the chat and only asked by the moderator to avoid any repetitive questions. And to ensure the forum stays respectful, you'll have one minute to respond to the questions in the chat. When we get to the end of our um initial questions. Lastly, you will have ninety seconds at the end for a wrap-up. So let's get started. I'll read, I'll introduce the candidates um. And you'll have one minute to um give a little spiel on yourself. And then we will get started. Um, I want you to, everyone to recognize that um we made several attempts to reach out to Robin Crasson, the other opponent. And he did not get back to us at any time, um, so he was not present. So tonight, we only have one candidate, and that is Tanya Kern. So Tanya, I'll go ahead and give you a minute to introduce yourself before we get into the questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, first, I'd like to say thank you to First State Educate, um, Delaware PTA, and all of their partners for sponsoring this forum. Um, the other thing is um many of you may not know, but my opponent, Robin Crowson, his wife passed away last week, so I want to give my deepest condolences to him and his family. Um, as Kelly said, my name is Tanya Kearns, and I'm running for a seat on the Colonial School Board. I was born and raised in Delaware, attended Woodbridge High School in Bridgeville, Delaware, which is the smallest school in the state. Um, I continued my education at Golden Beacon College where I earned a BS degree and an associate's degree. So my, my bachelor's was in accounting, my associate's in computer information systems. Then I went on to Wilmington University and earned a master's in computer information systems. Oh, my time's up. Okay.
Keep going. No, no, no. Keep going. You get one another minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
It was my mistake. That was my mistake. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, I began my accounting career working at a daycare and head start program here in Newcastle County. Um, I love volunteering, especially in educational settings. I've been a volunteer for over thirty-five years, I would say, um, during college as well as in my professional career. I've worked at the school volunteering at the YMCA. I've been a coach and um for girls' basketball and also a coach at the YMCA, worked for PTA. And I'm also on the Colonial Financial Oversight Committee. Um, I reside in Bear, Delaware with my husband. I have two daughters who are alumni of Colonial School District and Wayompin High School. And I have two bonus daughters that are currently attending schools in Colonial.
That it? Alright. Let's go ahead and get started on the questions. What are your, what are a school board member's roles and responsibilities? How does your background fit into this role? And how does that role differ from the role of the superintendent or administration?
The primary duties of a school board member are to set the vision and the goals for the district. Um, they adopt policies for the district as well. Um, a main, I guess I would say, one of the main goals is to hire and evaluate the superintendent. They also oversee the budget and the spending of um all public dollars. Um, and then they are responsible for responding to the community, being interactive with the students, faculty, and staff in the community. Um, my role, I have been a board member um for several organizations. Currently, I'm a board member at Wilmington Children's Course. I was a board member for Newcastle County Head Start, so I'm very familiar with working as a board member and what the roles and responsibilities are. And I've also been a manager at many um profit, for-profit and nonprofit companies. So I have that information and I know how to, to handle those responsibilities as well. My role, uh, the role of a district superintendent and its administrators are to carry out policy set by the board, which is um completely different than the role of a board member.
Alright, thank you. How do you view a school board member's role and responsibilities around improving student outcomes? Given that Delaware has some of the lowest math proficiency and literacy scores in the nation and that we fall in the bottom third of the country?
Um, the role of the school board members in improving, improving student outcomes involves setting clear goals and expectations. Um, fostering positive school environment, recognizing student's success, um, and including all stakeholders in that recognition involving um parents, family members, as well as community in helping with those decisions.
Okay. Do you believe implicit bias exists in your district? And if so, what do you plan to do as a school board member to make sure implicit bias isn't negatively impacting students and staff?
Yes, I do believe implicit bias exists in Colonial School District. Um, I believe it exists everywhere. Um, and it's basically the perceptions, expectations, and interactions with students, staff, and, and families. Um, as a board member, I am committed to fostering inclusive and equitable educational environment for students, staff, and families. Um, some steps that I would recommend are education and training of board members, educators, and all other staff to raise awareness. Um, review of policies and procedures to make sure that there's no bias written within those policies. And to look at student performance and potential influences where, see if there's bias affecting those. Um, and always involve the community. Um, community engagement is very important. And then equity audits. They would help as far as determining how we're doing, what we're doing, and, and where we can improve.
Okay. Thank you. The previous question was about racial and social justice. With this question, we'd like you to think about the needs of our intellectually diverse community. Give one specific example to describe how you would ensure quality education for all students. For example, gifted and talented, special needs, English language learners, and those from diverse cultural backgrounds.
Um, my example would be um enhancing literacy skills. Um, through personalized reading programs. I think that's uh a program that we could use that would help students individually. Um, some of the ways to implement that would be to work with the administrators and educators to assess student literacy levels. Um, use those assessments then to create individualized reading plans, provide one-on-one tutoring to those um individuals that needed some extra assistance. And then professional development for our teachers on literacy to help improve that as well. And then the, the last thing I would say is expanding all learning opportunities and engaging parents and the community in those pro- programs.
The hosts of this forum strongly support safe and supportive schools. The Delaware Department of Education district-level data shows that Black, Brown, and Special Education students are disproportionately represented in discipline referrals, suspensions, and arrests. What other steps beyond existing policies should the school district take to ensure fair and equitable treatment for all students?
Some of the steps that I would recommend the district take to ensure fair and equitable treatment are um engage students, families, and the community in the decision-making process. Diversify the educational workforce. Um, and this helps with representation because that definitely matters. Um, consider alternatives to suspension. Uh, restorative practices would be one. Um, look for ways to prevent conflict and address it early before it gets to um a level where it has to be um where it has to be handled severely. Um, set clear unbiased policies and enforce behavior expectations const- and consequences for the students to understand. So it's important that the students understand what's expected of them as well, so that when, when they do have a violation or an issue, that you can talk to them and they'll understand, yes, we know about this. And then um provide access to integrated services and support to address um needs that are outside of the school. For example, mental health, food assistance, and um housing assistance, other areas that could be causing the uh behavior.
Okay, thank you. The hosts of this forum strongly support family engagement in education. Attendance at school board meetings has been higher over the past few years due to the virtual option. What is your position on continuing to offer a virtual option for school board meetings? Provide an example of how you value community and family engagement.
Um, I totally support offering that virtual option for school board meetings. Um, and I also would include the public comments portion um to be held virtually as well. Continuing that virtual option would allow families with busy schedules um to attend. There's a lot of families that have um several things scheduled at the same time. Um, you know, mothers, fathers go to baseball games. One can be sitting in the car on the board meeting while, while the other one's at the game. So you're still there, but you're participating in both events. Um, families that need babysitters, that would eliminate that. And transportation would be another thing that it would eliminate. So virtual board meetings would help parents attend and provide more parent in involvement. Um, literacy programs, parent education sessions, and family nights would be examples of how we can engage families and the community um in these sessions.
The hosts of this forum strongly support common sense gun laws. Given that there has been an unprecedented number of school shootings in 2023 and several near misses in our state, please elaborate on your views on guns and safe storage and how this can affect the increased violence in our communities near schools.
Um, firearms should only be carried by trained professionals, in my opinion, and um unloaded firearms should be stored in locked cabinets um separate from the ammunition. Far too many untrained civilians, students, children have access to firearms, and that contributes to the increase of violence in our communities and near our schools. Um, so I, I just, I strongly feel that um firearms should only be handled by trained individuals and kept in locked cabinets.
Alright, thank you. There's been a lot of discussion about banning books at school board meetings all over the country. What are your views around this and how will you implement policy to reflect it?
Um, I oppose banning books. Restricting access to books limits the growth um for our, our families, our children, and is a violation of the First Amendment rights for students, educators, and the community. Everyone should have access to information, whether it is controversial or not. Um, that is, you know, that's their decision to decide whether or not they want to learn from those particular books. Some of the policies that I would recommend to include are educating students and family members of the dangers of censorship. Um, review library policies to make sure that, that they're aligned with the principles of intellectual freedom, uh, community engagement, involving the community and having discussions about books and public hearings to discuss concerns about why or, or why, or why not books should be banned. Um, I think once we involve the public and we discuss it, um, some of those concerns can be ironed out without banning books. Um, and then professional development on how to handle book challenges when there are challenges to um related to banning books.
Okay, thank you. School boards all over the nation are adopting policies around protecting LGB, LBGTQT plus, it's such a mouthful, um, and transgender students. What are your views on this policy and where do you see the school's role in this area?
Um, I support adopting policies and protecting the LBG QT plus and transgender students. Um, we live in an era where individual rights are constantly challenged. And I think the school plays an important role in creating a safe, respectful, and nurturing environment for all of our students. Schools should always promote inclusiveness, understanding, and acceptance to prevent bullying and foster growth. By establishing policies, we promote a stronger sense of community and ensure that students and staff feel valued and respected.
Alright. Please list the top three characteristics it takes to be an effective school board member.
Okay, so there's many characteristics. But my top three are an active listener. Um, listening to students, parents, and educators and the community to understand the needs and their needs and concerns. Um, be an advocate for education. Um, my second is a collaborator and communicator. Board members um need to be able to work well together, work with administrators, and work with community partners. Um, should always be clear and respectful communication between um all those community partners. And then a commitment to equity and the success of all students. I think board, uh, board members should be committed to equity and the success of all students. So it works by leveling the playing field for all students so that they can all succeed. And it utilizes um centered decision-making, student-centered decision-making. So all decisions should be in relation to students.
Mental health continues to be a tremendous issue for students and staff in our schools. What is your view on social emotional learning resources and schools providing these resources to students? Where do you think there is room for improvement?
Um, social, emotional, and learning is an important part of education, and I do believe it should be offered within the schools. Um, it is required so that the students can feel safe and have a healthy learning environment. Um, some of the resources, uh, they can use these resources to help develop skills such as managing emotions, building healthy relationships, and making responsible decisions. As far as the room for imple- improvement, I think there's always room for improvement, especially when it relates to teacher training and effective implementation of social and emotional learning. Um, consistent application of those resources is another area to improve. And then making sure that the resources are accessible to all students.
The school-to-prison pipeline seems to be increasing. What policies would you recommend to end this? And what are your views on SROs, Student Resource Officers, and how they impact this?
Um, school-to-prison pipeline, the increasing is, is a disturbing trend. Um, there are some things, or several things I would recommend. Um, definitely invest more in education so that the resources are adequate, meaning teachers, counselors, class sizes, and other services that the school can provide. Um, implement restorative practices for discipline instead of um using suspension as the first level. Um, and then addressing the root cause. A lot of times, students have a reason for acting out. And I feel that the school can assist the students in finding or determining the root cause. And once the students are able to um adjust and, and um react to the root cause, I think that helps their behavior. Uh, most students are just acting out and we have to find out why. Um, and then collaborate with community groups to help enhance the family engagement. As far as SROs, I do support SROs in the school, but my I think their role should be student-centered, centered around education, counseling, and training. Um, the first line of discipline should always be the school administration.
Thank you. Referendums are a way for school districts to raise taxes to pay for both operational needs and capital expenses to improve school infrastructures. What are your views on the referendums? And how do you feel there should be referendum reform? And how does that look?
Um, referendums are necessary to fund school districts. Um, the way the current laws are written, um, they fund our operating or current expense as well as capital needs. Um, recently Colonial just passed a referendum, and thank you to all Colonial community members for that. Um, Delaware does need to reform the referendum process. Um, so that rising operating costs can be handled on an annual basis or addressed on an annual basis rather than waiting three or four years for a referendum. Um, the school board should have a cap limit on how much taxes they can raise each year, but I do think that um the referendum process needs to be reformed.
Okay. In the past few years, there has been an escalated amount of cases around lead in schools and in the drinking water. Please share with the audience your views on this and how you propose better guidelines and laws around lead prevention.
Um, lead in our drinking water at schools is um a major problem. It's a health and safety risk for our students and the staff that work in those buildings. Um, I would commit to increasing the cleaning, testing, and monitoring of all the fixtures within the schools. Um, improving some infrastructure so that we can um replace uh water fountains and faucets and different things that contain the lead, as well as installing um certified lead-removing filters on faucets to help with that issue. Um, especially those faucets that are used for cooking and drinking. And then um as far as how to improve it, I would say seek funding from through grants, federal programs, state programs, and also community partners. And then evaluate and communicate what we've done as a district to not only monitor lead mo- um levels, but also improve the lead at our schools. So definitely let the um community know about our risk and exposure.
Okay, thank you. Um, just want to let the audience know that we have three more questions. If you have any questions you haven't heard answered yet, um, please put them in the chat so that we can ask those um after um we have finished our scheduled questions. Alright, so recently, there's a lot of talk around charter schools and their growth in our state. What are your views on school choice? And please elaborate on how you view charter schools?
Um, I do support school choice because not all children fit into one building, one classroom, one educational process or curriculum. So I think having options as a family is necessary. Um, and then not all schools have this, have the same curriculum and teaching methods. So depending on your, your child and students, they may require different teaching methods and different curriculums. As far as Delaware charter schools, um, charter schools are public schools. Um, but they operate under, most of them operate under a contract either with the State Department, Department of Education, or with the school district. Um, they operate independently, and they have their own governing board of directors. So they, and they do provide alternatives to education for families. So I think charter schools are um a necessary part of our educational system.
Okay. The Wilmington Learning Collaborative, along with the Reading Consortium, has made some very strong recommendations. Please share your knowledge of this and where you stand on a path forward for the students in the city of Wilmington.
Um, both programs, the Wilmington Learning Co- Collaborative and the Reading Consortium, both um primarily focus on educational equity and transforming the educational landscape uh for the, within Wilmington. Some of the main goals um that I've, that I've read are empowering school communities, improving the outcome for Wilmington students using um evidence-based support services, and then fostering connecting learning environments. Um, another one would be state-funded programs on education and equity and access. Um, so I do support both initiatives. Um, and I, I um, I think they would be beneficial for the city of Wilmington, but also Newcastle County students.
Okay. With Essar funds soon expiring, what is your position on providing free breakfast and lunch to all students while in school? And what do you propose is the best resolve to providing nutrition to our most neediest families?
Um, I definitely support free lunch, free breakfast for all students while they're in school. Um, this allows students to eat regardless of their household income. Um, some of the benefits um are reduced stigma. A lot of children get picked on if they cannot afford to purchase lunch or breakfast. So you don't have to worry about the household income. Um, and it improves student health, and it also helps with academic performance. So I definitely think um we should provide free lunch to all students. Um, funding for these programs can come from the state and federal level. Funding for these programs can come from the state and federal level as well as our community partners. I'm certain there's grants out there that can help us pay for free lunch for our students.
Okay, that was the last of our regularly planned questions. We do have one question for you. And if anyone else has any, please put them in the chat, or I'll be giving you some extra time in your evening, which is a good thing to go outside and enjoy this lovely day. So here's the question. What would you like to see added to civics education?
What would I like to see added to civics education?
Civics, yep.
Civics as opposed to just regular social studies? I think civics should should include everything that it has now. I don't know that I would add anything else to civics education. I think it covers quite a bit of what happens in the United States now. So I would not add anything to it. I would probably just enhance it, elaborate more on some of the topics that's covered under civics, but I would not necessarily add more to it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so I don't see any other questions in the chat. So I wanted to thank you for being here. I'm going to give you ninety seconds to kind of wrap up. Tanya, thank you. And those who were coming in late, just so you know, we did invite all of the candidates, and Tanya is the only one who accepted our invitation. So you have ninety seconds to sort of do a recap, and then we will wrap up.
Okay, I just want to thank everyone for attending tonight's forum. It's great to see people come out to support school boards and public education. And I hope I was able to answer all of your questions and also earn your vote. If there's any other questions that you have, you can reach me at my Facebook page, Tanya Kearns for Colonial, and I can give you more information. And you can also send me messages as well as an email. My email's tanyakearnsforcolonial@gmail.com. Otherwise, I'm glad to see everyone here, and I hope to see you on Election Day, May fourteenth. And I hope I won your vote, so please vote for Tanya Kearns. Thank you.
Alright, as Tanya said, May fourteenth polls open at seven AM until eight PM. You can go and check where your polling places are in Colonial School District. You do not have to vote at your normal regularly scheduled. You can vote at any of those polling places. You have to be a resident of the district, be eighteen years old, and be a US citizen to vote. And you just need to bring a piece of ID that has your address on it and your name. So please come out to vote. Your voice is important, and we thank everyone for attending tonight, and have a good evening.